Order, people, please take seats. There's the whole, by coincidence, the whole front row was practically empty. So there's plenty of room up front. And can we start with roll call, please, Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Romack. Here. Vice Mayor Klosdod.
Here.
Mayor Zabriski.
Here.
Councilmember Polavy.
Here.
And I will note Councilmember Henderson as absent. Thank you.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? In light of the special nature of this evening's meeting, we are going to begin with a land acknowledgement, which Laura Sailor will present for us from the podium. Thank you, Laura.
Thanks. Land acknowledgement of the Washi Shiu homelands. The town of Truckee acknowledges that we live and work upon the homelands of the Washi Shiu, the people from here, who have resided in, stewarded, and shaped these lands for at least 15,000 years. Truckee lies within Washi Shiu Ede, where generations of Washi Shiu cultivated, studied, and cared for the lands and waters, not only as hunters and gatherers, but as biologists, botanists, astronomers, hydrologists, and knowledge keepers whose practices sustained balance and abundance. The Washi Shiu today are represented by the Washoe tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation that continues to protect and advocate for their homelands. Despite centuries of colonization, forced removal, mining, logging, and extractive practices that have altered these places, the Washi Shiu persist in stewardship, cultural revitalization, and assertion of sovereignty. We acknowledge that these harms are not only historical, but continue in our global systems today. We honor the Washi Shiu as the original and enduring stewards of this region and affirm our commitment to strengthening government-to-government relationship with the Washoe tribe of Nevada and California. This includes moving beyond consultation to embrace shared leadership, particularly in areas such as land use, climate and environmental stewardship, and cultural recognition. The town is committed to identifying ways to appropriately compensate the Washoe tribe for sharing their knowledge and expertise, recognizing the value of their cultural teachings, scientific practices, and lived experience. As residents, workers, and visitors in these homelands, we invite all to move beyond reflection and toward action, learning the history, supporting tribal initiatives, and practicing reciprocity with the land and waters. This acknowledgement is not an ending, but an opening towards deep accountability, shared leadership, and enduring stewardship with the Washi Shiu people.
Thank you, Ms. Sailor, for joining us and presenting the land acknowledgement. Now is the time for general public comment, which is to say, any public comment for a matter that is not on the agenda. Now, the agenda tonight includes a number of presentations and a couple of proclamations. There'll be an opportunity to comment on those later. So for now, it's anything that's not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to make a public comment, would you please come over to the podium right now? Okay, it's a large audience, but I don't see anyone approaching the podium. So we will move on to presentations, and then those will be followed by what's called a consent calendar. Those are non-controversial items, considered non-controversial, will be presented to the council. And then we have three discussion items after that. So on the presentations, we have eight with many subparts. The first one will be the presentation of election results from staff.
Thank you, Mayor Zabriski. I just wanted to give a quick update on Measure G and what's been reported so far by Nevada County. As of Friday, 58% of the votes have been counted. And we have 54% in favor of yes. Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's for Proposition 50, the statewide election. That is 54% in favor of yes and 49, 45% in favor of no. But with Measure G in Nevada County, 50.91% votes counted, with 71.19% voting yes and 28.81% voting no. In Placer County, with Proposition 50, we have 55% voting no, 44% voting yes. And for Measure G in Placer County, 74.53% voting yes and 25.47% voting no. And I'll remind everyone that for Proposition, I'm sorry, for Measure G to pass, it requires two-thirds vote, or 66.7%. So that's the latest from the elections office. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like Measure G passed.
It hasn't yet been called, but it's looking promising.
And so when will it be finally certified?
They have 30 days to certify the election.
Okay, and do you know when they'll have an update on the vote count?
I believe they update twice a week. So this was Friday, so there should be another update Tuesday, tomorrow?
Okay, probably Wednesday then.
Wednesday.
Because of the holiday.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item 5.2. That's, and for that item, it's the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award. Could Cindy Peterson and Nicole Hostelwhite join me at the podium? Okay. I'm proud to share that the town of Truckee has received what's called the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GOFOA, for our fiscal year 2025-26 operating budget. And for those of you who aren't familiar with GOFOA, it's a professional association of about 19,000 state, provincial, and local government finance officers in the U.S. and Canada. It's headquartered in Chicago. This award represents a significant achievement for our town. It's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and reflects the commitment of both our council and staff to meeting the highest principles of public financial management. To earn this recognition, a local government must meet nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines evaluate how well a budget functions as a policy document, financial plan, operation guide, and a communication device. Truckee's budget was reviewed by three independent reviewers, each evaluating it across 25 specific criteria. Reviewers shared several positive comments about our budget document, noting that it was detailed and easy for citizens to understand the complex issues and was well-written, provided a foundation for direction and priority. This recognition would not be possible without the finance department's leadership and dedication. And that's why I have invited Cindy and Nicole to join me. Cindy is our finance manager, and Nicole is our senior accountant. Their leadership, along with dedication and contributions from every department that helped prepare and refine the budget, led to this award. Their work ensures that our budget is more than just numbers. It's a transparent, accessible plan that clearly communicates how we allocate resources to achieve the community's priorities. Receiving the GOFO Distinguished Budget Presentation is a reflection of Truckee's ongoing commitment to transparency, accountability, and excellence in public service. And I want to add, we're a town of only 17,000 people. We have a small-town government. We don't have an army of people in our administrative arm or in our financial division. So this is a particularly exceptional award and proud achievement for our town. So a round of applause, please, for our finance department. And now I would like to present the award, I'm sure it's made out of local granite, to our financial staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say just a few words?
Sure.
Great.
I just want to reiterate, it was definitely a team effort, and we're very honored for this. We also were able to implement a whole new budget software this year. So to be able to do that and win the award is pretty exceptional and awesome for us. So thank you.
Could Richard Anderson and Mitch Claren join me at the podium? This will be the first of two proclamations in recognition of the work of the Truckees Rotary Club. And Mitch is the president of, no, I'm sorry, I meant Richard. Richard's sitting next to me. Richard is president of the Rotary, and Mitch is the past president of Rotary and also a planning commissioner for the town. Whereas Truckee is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Truckee is a community which recognizes the efforts of its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Truckee community members have consistently volunteered tens of thousands of hours annually in service toward countless efforts, large and small. Whereas Truckee is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go that extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the town of Truckee wishes to recognize the Rotary Club of Truckee for its effort to go the extra mile in the community and with their commitment and certainly spirit to service above self. And whereas this year, the Rotary Club of Truckee not only won Large Club of the Year, which means over 40 members, but among 61 other clubs in the district, also won Overall Club of the Year due to its achieved goals, sponsorships, new memberships, and fundraising events. And whereas Truckee acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and proudly supports Extra Mile Day each year, which this year, again, was on November 1st. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee that November 1, 2025, was Extra Mile Day and urges each individual in the community to take time to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to their organizations, family, communities, country, or world to make it a better place. So it is my pleasure to present this proclamation to Richard and Mitch on behalf of Truckee Rotary. Gentlemen. And would you like to divide up the time you're allotted here to just make-
How much time are we allotted?
Well, it's limited. I decide.
We can do something pretty quickly, I think.
Yes, of course.
I mean, you have a big group. Lots of-
Yeah, no, the podium is yours.
Okay. Mayor Zabriski, Honorable Town Council, thanks for the award. We very much appreciate it. I'll note quickly that Rotary was formed back in 1905, and over the succeeding 12 decades, it has grown to more than 45,000 clubs across 220 countries and has more than 1.2 million members worldwide. Rotary International is the motto of Rotary International, service above self. We are a service club. We try to do things for our community, but also internationally. And frankly, the spark plug in our club is Mitch Claren. The reason why we have received the awards that we received this past year is because of Mitch's leadership, his hard work. So Mitch, come on up and say a few words.
Thank you, Richard. Well, that's a little hard to follow. Actually, we are successful because of the town of Truckee and the citizens there and that we serve, that help us serve the town of Truckee. So the thank you goes out to you all for helping us, for attending the fundraisers. We have a big one this Saturday night called The Big Night Out. If you'd like to go, you can get tickets at the door at the New Rec Center. But we, so that's it. That's all I want to say. Thank you all for helping us win these awards. Thank you.
Can we heckle from back here? That's one of the shortest speeches ever from both of you I've ever heard. Impressive.
Okay, the next award is for Veterans Day. And could-
Kate Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Join me up here. Thank you. Thank you. I have with me a veteran. Fortunately. Whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century. Whereas it is estimated that 10% of our region's residents are veterans. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American service men and women now keeping watch. And whereas the town of Truckee would like to recognize the sacrifice of the families of veterans and active-duty personnel. And whereas the town of Truckee will come together on November 11th, that's tomorrow, at 11:00 a.m. at the Eagle Monument in Victory Plaza. As you know, that's all downtown at the corner of Donner Pass Road and Spring Street. And join us to recognize and celebrate our local veterans. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of town of Truckee, November 11, 2025, as Veterans Day in the town of Truckee and encourages Truckee residents to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. It is my great honor to present this proclamation to our very own veteran on the town staff. Could you say a few words, just please? Do you have something to say?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for letting me be a part of tonight's proceedings. Thank you to the honorable council, as well as to our town leadership and for the chief for asking me to be a part of tonight's proceedings. And as a 22-year Army veteran, you know, from being a combat Army aviator to a drill sergeant, to a combat journalist that started as a 17-year-old girl sitting at the end of a Donner Lake dock, making the decision with my parents to co-sign my contract to serve this beautiful community, I thank you for being so self-evident then and now that this is a beautiful place worth fighting for. Kate, thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate you being here. And Mayor, I'm going to play a video. This is part of a new series that we have. It's a veteran series highlighting three of our local veterans.
I am, next month I'll be 87, okay? Good life, huh? Wake up in the morning, say, you know, oh, wait. Good deal.
I am Ernie Grossman. I'm 91 years old.
Ronald Parsons, age 66, and I was a naval officer.
Right out of high school, four of us, on a whim, went down to the Coast Guard Recruiting Agency. You didn't know this? And we signed papers to join up for the Coast Guard. I was barely 16 when I got out of high school, and they told me to go home.
I served on the staff of U.S. Central Command, so I spent a lot of time in the desert. I call it my Lawrence of Arabia tour. Then I got assigned the ship in Japan, so I got to again, Sea Asia. The first deployment I had in '82, '83 was nine and a half months.
I joined in Essen Guard when I was 16. It applied about my age. I went in the military, hopefully, to have some discipline and stuff and also for pride, I guess. So I joined the Navy at the time.
I got sent to the Naval War College. From there, I went, kind of remember the whole sequence here. I went to the Navy staff in what I called the five-sided fun house, the Pentagon. And I spent two years there doing national policy, doing stuff, being sent again around the world to go to meetings and meet people, work with other forces. I left there and went to London and worked on the Navy staff in London for three years before I retired.
My role in the Navy was, I was what they call a machinist mate, which has to do with the engine room. We were cruising through the straits, at that time, straits of Formosa, and there was shooting involved with that artillery.
I look at people like George and Ron and see how much they've given. And I would like to have been there, but I wasn't. And yet, I would, thank goodness I was able to give something.
If I was to ask somebody, what did you do? Most of them start off with, I didn't do anything. It's everybody else that did that. But that's not true. Even for the people who served in the mountain, it's not true.
Oh, let me tell you, I'm wearing hairy gates because when I was in the service, I was infantry, assigned to an artillery unit. And in those days, we didn't know from earmuffs or anything.
We sat through three atomic bombs. Yeah, we were at safe distance, so they said. It's beyond the description, it would happen. You see the pictures of the mushroom cloud, but you don't see the effects on the ground, what happened. But it was, it was interesting. But I was young, and it made no difference then. It makes a difference now, but not then. We sat topside for a couple atomic bombs. On a top side, meaning the main deck. They had to sit down on the deck. They gave you goggles to wear because of the brightness of the bomb. And earmuffs, I don't remember that. But you're supposed to be in a cross position, sitting down like, and you hug me, you need. And so, oh my God, the thing's so bad. It actually picked you up and moved you from there. And we were safe distance, supposedly. I was in the engine room at the time, and we have watertight doors just all throughout the ship. And in the engine room, they had a watertight door. That bomb went off. It blew the main hatch to the compartment, and it blew the other hats to the engineering. I mean, just off the hinges, it was gone.
I think Veterans Day is an opportunity for the country to reflect. It's based on Armistice Day, which is the end of World War I. Okay, 11-11-11, when the guns went silent on the Western Front.
I think there was something called a service gene. It gets into you. And that transcends military. It goes to civilian, too. I've been very active in the community. And I think it's important, at least it was to me, to be able to give because I've been given so much.
Life experience means a lot. Especially for somebody that young to go in the military, it gives them some kind of structure. And that carries on through your life. I may be a better person, more nation-minded, you know, the... It, yeah, I pride in the nation, yeah.
My grandfather was actually in the First World War as an Army engineer. And they got together at the end of that war in Paris. All of the enlisted got together, a few officers, and they created the American Legion. Because they said, we need to not forget. We people need to know what we did, and we need to not have this happen again.
The American Legion up here, I really love, this is really a great group. And I couldn't wait to join it when I found out that they really, they had an active group up here.
Community is everything, you know? And that's why I joined the American Legion, because the community. Community is service, and it is awesome. Around the community, I wish more veterans could get into that because it's really purpose. It has a purpose. You know, with other veterans, you don't, it's not a place where you hear war stories, but it's more community-minded. Veterans Day? It's a way to recognize past, past veterans, present veterans. They don't get enough recognition. They really don't.
Veterans Day is an opportunity to not forget. Memorial Day is about the deceased who died, you know, in the service. Veterans Day is for everybody who served, living and dead. And we need to make sure that we do things like this, that we preserve their stories, that we understand what that commitment those people did. Whether you served in a place where your friends died next to you or whether you had friends die. I worked at Pentagon. I went back about a few months after it was attacked on 9/11, and I could see my desk because it had hit the Navy wing. I was fortunately in London by then. But every single person that I had worked with had been there. There's a sacrifice there that you can't explain to people, right? That pain that comes with it, the understanding of that loss and the sacrifice that those people made that was the ultimate sacrifice. This freedom that we have wasn't free. Let's remember on Veterans Day that this is about how our nation was built. It's how our nation is maintained. Whether we're using them in ways that we agree with or not, we have to trust that the people on active duty have a conscience and a responsibility that they will behave properly, and they do.
This nation, I love the way it's nation's own. I love my family. I can't love my nation, that's it.
I think everybody should contribute, should give back. I mean, the country's been too good to us. And serving in the military is just part of it. I think serving in your community is important. Veterans Day? Oh, I'm so proud of these guys. You bet. You know, I get tears if I see a Boy Scout carrying a flag.
Both Ernie and George talked about the service and then looking for a sense of organization in life and community. And it's interesting, we're about to go into a service part, community service, is what we're gonna be talking about next. But I also wanted to note, we mentioned that about 10% of the population in our region has served in the military. The national average is about 1%. So maybe there is a gene for service, and we've captured it here in our region. And we can think about that as we commend all the people who have done so much for our community, who have reached beyond themselves and put service above self. And keeping with that theme, I wanted to invite up Shabon and Brian Smart to join me at the podium. Military-like is what we have here. And there appears to be a clear leader of this organization. So when I finish going through this script, I'll ask you to say a few words and introduce all, everyone you could get to come up here, your entourage. Okay, Shabon, okay. Tonight, we're honored to recognize a cornerstone of our community, a business that embodies the spirit of service, resilience, and hometown pride. Our Small Business Big Applause Award goes to the Wagon Train Restaurant, owned and operated with incredible heart by Shabon and Brian Smart. Wagon Train's story began in 1947, the year I was born. Just two years after the end of World War II, when the Smart family opened this true mom-and-pop establishment. They built a warm, welcoming place where locals and travelers alike could come together. Today, Wagon Train is operated by Brian and Shabon, who's here, to carry on their family legacy with devotion and grit. Wagon Train has become one of Truckee's most beloved institutions. Its walls are lined with old license plates and nostalgic bric-a-brac, and its menu features, of course, hearty meals. But the restaurant's true legacy comes from the Smart family's unwavering spirit of service. The Smart family carries a powerful tradition of honoring those who have served. That commitment is not symbolic. It is lived. Every Veterans Day, Wagon Train provides complimentary meals for veterans and their families, a gesture rooted in gratitude, remembrance, and love for those who protect our nation. Their actions remind us that service extends well beyond uniforms. It lives in everyday kindness and community caring. Their support doesn't stop there. Wagon Train is a proud champion of Truckee's youth, regularly supporting our high school sports teams and showing up for the next generation just as consistently as they show up for the early morning crowd, opening their doors at 5:30 a.m. every day without fail. They're still smiling. These small acts, repeated over decades, are part of what makes Truckee feel like home. Brian and Shabon, your dedication, generosity, and stewardship of one of Truckee's most iconic establishments represent the very best of our community. You embody what this award is designed to honor. On behalf of the Town Council and the entire Truckee community, we extend our sincere appreciation and our big applause. Congratulations to the Wagon Train Restaurant for...
So I appreciate the thank you to Brian and Shabon. But Brian and Shabon don't work without these amazing people. Farrah, sorry, give me a second. Farrah, Michelle, Desi, Cassie, the Furtado kids. Him, all of these people show up for Veterans Day. And I'm gonna share just one quick story. We had a Veterans Day where we did not have any power in the restaurant. And so, my husband was cooking, Farrah was there. And I called and I said, "Hey, we have 130 people. We need to feed, and we have no place. I need you to clear out the restaurant." So they closed, asked people to get up, get their food to go. And we had a couple people that stayed. We had a general who was a retired pastor who stayed and bussed tables, and we got everybody fed at the restaurant. And they all walked down. And this crew, you guys are my lifeblood, and I love you. And to all of the veterans, words will never, ever, ever show how much we appreciate you. If you're a veteran, you eat for half often in my store. If you come in in uniform, I will feed you for free.
That completes our proclamations, but not our presentations. We're now moving on to the gratitude awards. And it is a pleasure and honor to continue this tradition. It was begun four years ago. We're celebrating Gratitude Month and recognizing the people and organizations that have made a real difference in our community over the past year. Gratitude is a feeling and a mindset. It reminds us to appreciate what we have, to honor the people who lift us up, and to celebrate the beauty and generosity that surround us every single day. And here in Truckee, we are fortunate to live in a community full of people who give, volunteers, organizations, neighbors, all working together to make this town what it is today. That's one of the great joys of living in a small town. But it's also what makes it so hard to choose just a few people among the many who we would like to honor tonight. Still, it's important to pause and to say thank you, to recognize those who give of themselves for our children, our lands, and the values that define who we are as a community. And the old saying reminds us, "Those who forget the language of gratitude can never speak in terms of happiness." So tonight, we speak in the language of gratitude. And we'll start with Councilmember Polavy, who will make the first award.
Thanks, Jan. So, welcome, first of all, everybody. It's a true pleasure to be here tonight as we pause during this season to celebrate Gratitude Month and honor all of the organizations that are essential to making Truckee the thriving community we love. We're fortunate to live in a town full of people who give, volunteers, neighbors, and crucial organizations, like many of you here tonight, all working together. So thank you for the honor to kick off our gratitude recognitions tonight. First up, excuse me, first up, I'd like to recognize an organization that is, without question, the premier voice of our town's businesses and a world-class connector for our mountain community. On behalf of the council and the town, I'm honored to present my gratitude award to the Truckee Chamber of Commerce. Here they are. And I'm not done yet, sorry. The Chamber's mission, dedicated to strengthening our long-term economic health and empowering its 500-plus members, is evident in every initiative they undertake. They're truly upholding their three strategic pillars: advocating for business, bolstering economic prosperity, and cultivating community connection. In the last year alone, the Chamber has taken steps toward data-driven economic resilience. They launched a business listening tour in the fall of 2024 to gather direct feedback from local businesses and initiated their use of Placer.ai to track real-time visitation trends and foot traffic. This provides absolutely essential insights that will directly support decision-making, including the town's upcoming economic action plan. This will be an essential resource for ensuring our decisions are backed by data. Beyond economic vitality, the Chamber excels at community empowerment and education. They hosted hundreds of participants in their monthly Lunch and Learn series and in partnership with the town, facilitated the Town Talks program. I'm also deeply appreciative of their commitment to the youth and our workforce development through programs like the TNT Tech Teens and the Futurepreneurs Pitch Showcase. Finally, the Chamber is a true partner in fostering connection. In the last year, they successfully managed the Core Values Fund, which helped finance 24 unique events, and saw nearly 150,000-plus visitors come through our Welcome Center. They also act as the job convenor, running the Truckee Jobs Collective website and executing on the annual Job Fair. To President and CEO Jessica Penman, along with, I think we have Ruth, Melissa, Tricia, yeah, I got all you guys, Board Chair Amber, I don't know if she's here, and the entire team at Board of Directors, thank you for modeling the spirit of service and gratitude every day. I and we are truly grateful for your partnership and the heart you bring to this community. Please join me in congratulating the Truckee Chamber of Commerce. If you'd like to say something, you are welcome to. You don't have to do anything up here.
I'll just, thank you, Dave. I'll just say something really, really quick. I've been in this community now for three years, and it's been my honor and pleasure to serve as the President and CEO of the Chamber. I see a lot of Chamber members actually in the audience today. Wagon Train is a member and will be hosting a Super Fun Mixer in February, so look out for that. But we couldn't do it without my team, We're Small But Mighty, and my board as well. So I just want to say thank you and the partnership with the town. I feel very lucky to get to do this job. Thank you so much.
And now, Councilmember Lindsey Romack will share her selection for gratitude award.
All right, thank you. Mike Kalik and Bree Waters, if you two want to come up here with me. I'm gonna move the podium a little more so that way we can see more of you. And it's so hard to pick just one. I picked two gratitude award recipients. But I did want to highlight, it's definitely a priority of this council to bring people together, to bring community connectivity and inclusivity. And we know that that starts with our youth. When young people feel supported and included, it makes our community stronger. So that's why tonight I wanted to express my gratitude for two long-serving youth organizations that have been at the heart of that mission. And they are Truckee Little League and Truckee American Youth Soccer Organization, or Truckee AYSO. Applause. So both these organizations welcome every kid that wants to participate. There's no tryouts or cuts. If you want to play, you can play. And it's an opportunity for kids to not only learn sports skills, but also to be part of something bigger than themselves. Starting as young as four years old in both Little League and in AYSO, kids can learn what it means to work hard, support their teammates and opponents, and learn from their mistakes, lessons that go far beyond the field. There are many youth-focused organizations in this community, and it's never easy to choose, as all of my fellow council members will say. But I've been excited to now really see both of these organizations at work the past two years as now I have a youngster participating. And just the teamwork, resilience, community pride that comes out of both of these organizations is just fantastic. But you know, it wouldn't happen without all of the volunteers. So I got some stats from both Bree and Mike to share with you because I think this is pretty incredible. So first, we'll start with Truckee Little League, which is 67 years old. It's been going strong since 1958. And this past year, more than 540 kids in Truckee participated in baseball and softball. And since I highlighted inclusivity at the beginning, did want to highlight two years ago, they brought on softball. So that way, girls, boys, if you want to do softball or baseball, you are welcome again to play. More than 190 adults volunteer each year, including 17 board members, which Bree told me translates to around 5,000 volunteer hours, which is incredible. And I did want to highlight Bree, the President of the Board. She's been doing this for eight years, and she does an amazing job. And then Truckee AYSO. They've been a Truckee institution for 45 years. Mike shared they had about 160 adult volunteers this year coaching and leading kids' teams from four to 15 years old. And they had 744 kids play this past fall, which translates to almost one in five kids in Truckee play Truckee AYSO soccer, which is pretty awesome. So between these two organizations, that's nearly 400 volunteers, well over 10,000 volunteer hours, all in the service of kids, families, and our future. Because of Truckee Little League and Truckee AYSO and the incredible volunteers, our kids again aren't just learning how to play sports. They're learning how to be teammates, leaders, and community members. So I did want to thank them. And first, I did want to highlight, if anyone who is a Little League player or a Little League volunteer, can you stand up right now so we can recognize all the amazing players and volunteers in this room? And then we'll go to Truckee AYSO. If you're a volunteer or a soccer player in AYSO, please stand up. So thank you all for the dedication of this entire community for making both of these organizations so incredible. So I will present to Mike the official gratitude award. Here you go. And then to Bree. You're welcome. And then I invite Bree, if you want to go first and say a few words.
I just want to thank everybody that's on our board who puts in countless hours, especially those of you that have kids that have aged out of the program years ago and still volunteer your time to make it an even playing field. You've got no skin in the game. And you do it for a reason, so that everybody can play, and it's very fair. And I just want to, I appreciate everything you guys do for these kids.
I would like to thank the council and the Rotary for all your support. And of course, we couldn't do it without all our volunteers, especially our board. Half our board doesn't have any kids in the program. Their kids have graduated because we believe quality team sports create a better human and a better world. So, thank you.
All right, and now picture. So feel free, all...
Everybody here, feel free to go.
Oh, there we go, it's perfect.
And now Vice Mayor Kloostat.
Hello, everyone. It's actually a little-known secret that there is a little competition here on Town Council, because when Jen sends out the email of like, "All right, who do you want to honor this year?", we all kind of rush to it, because it is, there are so many organizations in this community, and we, I would have loved to have been the person honoring each one of them already tonight, and our future honoree. I want to thank Jen initially, because she brought this idea, this concept, to the council four years ago, and I think it's been one of our favorite activities and events of the year, because we really get to shine a light back on the community that makes this region so special. So, with that, if I could have the Truckee Donner Land Trust and their board come and join me up here. John Swan?
So this year, it is my distinct honor to present the 2025 Gratitude Award from the Vice Mayor to the Truckee Donner Land Trust. As someone who's had the privilege of serving on Town Council for several years, that has allowed me to witness the expansive and impactful work of the Truckee Donner Land Trust, as we have been partners in multiple projects and multiple focus areas for the benefit of our community. And then, of course, living in this community for nearly three decades now, I am an avid user of our open spaces, of which Truckee Donner Land Trust has granted many of them. I see the beneficial results of the Truckee Donner Land Trust's hard work nearly every day on our local trails and lands, especially right now, as that's about all I can do, is get out and walk on the trails. When considering who I should, who should receive my recognition for the year, I jumped at the chance and emailed Jen early, I'm like, "I want the Truckee Donner Land Trust", because I know firsthand, especially over these last few years, the dedication required to achieve their goals. Several years ago, I had the honor of serving on one of their committees to raise funds for the Truckee Springs Purchase. And I got to witness the relentless efforts, the incredible organization. They had so many committees for this one effort. We had the Bridge Committee, and the fundraising committee, and the dedication committee. I mean, it was amazing. So there's so much that goes on behind the scenes that I was not aware of until I had the honor of serving on that, on that committee. And it's really made me realize that the architecture that they have in place in order to create these systems, to dedicate land for open space in perpetuity, is really extraordinary. And now, thanks to that group and the Truckee Donner Land Trust, we have the wild side of Truckee. And a bridge to our newest park, W-Mway Park, I hope you have all enjoyed it. It is absolutely stunning, and you get to stand there and look over at the amazingly amazing new dedicated land for the Truckee community. The work of the Truckee Donner Land Trust perfectly encapsulates our community values. They are dedicated to both protecting and enjoying our natural lands. We recently saw the power of this mission in action during the efforts to save Jackass Ridge, and I think I can still say that, right? Okay. The Land Trust campaign launched specifically to secure, conserve, and create a recreational space with iconic views for many to come, many years to come. And seeing our community rally together to achieve that fundraising goal, as well as so many other goals, was a testament to Truckee Donner Land Trust's vital role in leading conservation efforts for our community now and into the future. Whether it's managing a unique public amenity like Frog Lake, the Backcountry Huts, or providing access to facilities like Weber Lake Camping, the Truckee Donner Land Trust ensures our natural heritage is both preserved and accessible to everyone. And I highly recommend, if you have not done so, to go on one of their docent-led hikes. They're quite extraordinary. You can see, well, they're all over for the year, right? But next year's will be on the website. So on behalf of the Town of Truckee, I want to thank the Truckee Donner Land Trust for being a responsible and transparent organization that works diligently to protect the beauty and character of our region. You are helping us all leave a legacy. It's my pleasure to present this award to you, Truckee Donner Land Trust, for your efforts and community service.
Thank you, Town Council, and thank you, Town staff, and thank all of you. I see a lot of trail workers and volunteers out there. And on a personal note, a lot of the projects we do require some really creative thinking, and I very much want to thank our staff and then the town staff for trying to figure out all these complex problems when we're doing acquisition or stewardship. So, thank you.
We're going to have a recess, an opportunity to mingle and to dive in to the appetizers at the back table, which I have been scrutinizing from the dais since we started. The next award is the one that would be presented by Councilmember Henderson. Courtney was not able to join us, but she did do a video, and to help do this presentation, I would like it if Craig Rowe and any other members of his La Fuerza Latina are here to join him up here at the podium. And then I think we'll just go ahead and have, do the video presentation, and then we'll ask Craig and any of his others to join.
This November, I'm honored to recognize someone whose vision has fundamentally changed what's possible for young people in our-- This November, I'm honored to recognize someone whose vision has fundamentally changed what's possible for young people in our community. When Craig Rowe founded La Fuerza Latina, he saw something the rest of us often missed: brilliant, driven students living right here in our community, students whose potential was limitless, but whose pathways weren't always clear. La Fuerza Latina doesn't just help students get to college, it walks alongside them, from ninth grade through undergraduate, gap years, and well into graduate school. That kind of commitment is rare. That kind of belief is transformative. Today, La Fuerza Latina supports more than 100 local first-generation students at various stages of their educational journey. 100%, every single student is a Tahoe Truckee Unified School District graduate who grew up right here. Right now, LFL scholars are earning degrees at Stanford, Harvard, Tufts, Williams, the University of Michigan, Stanford, UC Berkeley, UCLA, and multiple California State universities. These aren't just statistics, these are our neighbors' children. And I want to speak directly to the La Fuerza Latina students here today and throughout our community. Thank you. Thank you for your courage in pursuing dreams that may have at times seemed impossible. Thank you for the late-night studying, for believing in yourselves when doubts crept in, and for showing younger students what's possible. You are living proof that talent and determination exist everywhere, and you are our community's future leaders. We see you, we believe in you, and we are so deeply grateful for all of you. Craig and all of the LFL scholars, you've proven that zip codes don't determine destinies. Your work doesn't just change individual lives, it changes families, and it changes our entire community's future. Thank you for seeing what others may have overlooked. Thank you for building something that will outlast us all.
Yeah, it is a remarkable organization. I represented the town in a county cities meeting down in Grass Valley about a month ago, and it was a big group of people I didn't know. And at the end of the presentations, who pops up? Craig Rowe with a group of students from Truckee High School, who had been watching, attending, the whole thing, as just part of their student effort. And it's just great that we have a high school teacher, he's one among others, he's not the only one, but who will make that trip, who will get the students out and get them to experience something bigger than Truckee. And so on behalf of Councilmember Henderson and all of us on the Town Council, I want to say thank you, Craig, and thank you to the incredible students who have achieved so much. It wasn't Craig alone. You each, all independently, have shown your worth, and we look forward to great things from you. I don't mean to put any pressure on you. We stand with you and we cheer you on every step of the way. And now, Craig, if you or any of the other members of your group would like to say something, we would certainly appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Council, and thank you, Councilwoman Henderson, who's not here. I would like to invite just two of our scholars up, although I'd like to give them all hugs. But I'd like to invite just two of our scholars up to share some remarks, and then I'd like to share my gratitude to Rochelle Zarate.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rochelle Zarate, and I'm a junior at Truckee High School. I'm here tonight, and I'm really honored to be, to say a few words about La Fuerza Latina. LFL has made a huge impact to not just our community, but in all of our lives. It's helped me see what's possible for my future, and reminded me that where I come from is something to be proud of. As a Mexican-American and a hopeful first-generation college student, I've seen how hard my family works and how much they've sacrificed so I could have opportunities. Sometimes it can be easy to be overlooked or unsure if you really belong, especially with everything happening in our country right now, but LFL shows students like me that we do belong, that our voice, our culture, and our dreams matter. Because of LFL support, I've had the opportunity, I've had opportunities I've never imagined. I was honored to receive a National Optimum Hispanic Heritage Award. I was part of an Emerging Rural Leaders Program at the University of Chicago, and I represented my school in Model UN Conferences in Claremont, Berkeley, and Stanford. And I'm currently serving in the Nevada County Youth Commission. Each of these experiences has helped me grow as a student, as a leader, and as a proud Latina. It's powerful to see how much Mr. Rowe believes in all of us and helps us reach our full potential. I've learned that success isn't about grades, it's about believing in yourself, working hard, and having people who really believe in you. So tonight, I want to give a huge thank you to Councilwoman Henderson for believing in what Mr. Rowe does, and the entire Truckee Town Council for supporting this award. It reminds us that our community sees us, values us, and stands with us. Thank you all.
Hi, good afternoon or evening at this point to everyone joining us today. My name is Daniela, longtime resident of Truckee, 2020 Truckee High School graduate, and 2024 UC Riverside alum. Today, on behalf of La Fuerza Latina, I would like to thank the Town of Truckee for this recognition, especially Councilwoman Henderson, and everyone that has become part of it. I would like to recognize the importance and significance of what it means to receive this recognition at a time in which has us feeling anxious and disheartened on unprecedented times, a time in which groups like La Fuerza Latina have become that much more important. La Fuerza Latina has become a pivotal force in guiding students through the process of higher education, which includes support in applying to flying college programs, all the way to applying to masters or law school. LFL has provided a foundation for Latinx students to have a support system in not only their educational journey, but their professional lives. It has created a safe space in which many Latinx students like me can come back to whenever needed. LFL has not only been driven by ambitious students, but also their hard-working families that have always dreamed of a brighter future for their children, families that continue to hold their hands even when knowing little to no English and not understanding the process of what higher education is like, families that continue to be present regardless of how many hours they have worked or the distance that separates them. I want to acknowledge all the hard work that the first-ever students in LFL helped in 2016, to current students and all future students LFL will continue to support in the future. To all partnering organizations that have continued their support throughout the years, thank you so much, and we hope to continue working with you. Finally, a huge shout-out to the man who started it all, Mr. Rowe. Thank you for continuing to be present in our lives and shining a light for a better future. Thank you again.
Thank you, and I just wanted to express my gratitude out of respect for our other amazing community partners as well. But I did want to take this opportunity to really thank three groups, and one, that's my family. They're here tonight. We've built a family from scratch. That's my partner Suzanne, my son Bryson, and Jaycee. They're the ones who have sacrificed when I work nights and weekends and essays and things, when I haven't been the greatest father, they've responded to me with unconditional love. When I haven't been the greatest partner, I've been met with unconditional love, and you really showed me what dedication means throughout my life. To my students, they trusted me when I didn't feel trustworthy. They've given me their hopes and aspirations, and they took a guy who they knew was not half the student that they were, and yet their families and themselves really entrusted me with their futures. And so the only way I can ever express my gratitude is my undying dedication to you. I'll never forget or be able to express how much your trust and dedication has meant to me. And finally, to the Truckee Town Council and the Councilwoman Henderson, who's not here tonight. For me, this award and recognition is not about one person, it's not about one organization. I would be very happy to accept this award at any time, but as you've heard from our students, what a particular moment in our, in our country's arc, where I think this recognition, this public recognition of a CBO that proudly calls itself La Fuerza Latina, for the Town Council to say out loud that we are proud of our diversity. For me, this recognition is an expression of our Truckee values, that in Truckee, we recognize hard work and dedication, no matter what language it speaks at home. This recognition reminds us in Truckee, we value achievement and excellence, no matter where its parents are from. In Truckee, we value service and dedication to others, no matter the color of its skin. Our community, and we are very proud to be of it, has made a very public and courageous statement tonight, and we're deeply proud, because in Truckee, when the sun rises, it rises for everyone. So thank you very much.
So Craig, having said all that, it turns out we have two awards, and it's because one of them is for you personally, but the other one is for La Fuerza Latina. So congratulations. It's a great pride and honor. Okay, that's going to be a hard act to follow. Could Joan, Joan Jones, could you join me up here at the podium? Thank you. I and the council are honored to share our gratitude, oh, there you are, for Joan Jones's selfless contribution to our community. I ask that she be recognized this year, in part because of her leadership of the River Revitalization Steering Committee. I served on that committee and saw how Joan was able to hold our strong-willed members together with her humility, empathy, and patience. She has also been spending countless hours applying her professional expertise in construction and finance to help guide development for our new regional library. She was bawling hearing her time in these endeavors while still running not one, but two businesses, Horta Jones Construction and the Truckee River Winery with her husband Russ and daughter Katie. Her multitasking is nothing new for her. While operating both of these companies, she also served eight years as a Town Council member and twice served as mayor. Joan volunteered with the Far West Nordic Skies Education Association and the Truckee River Watershed Council. She championed women in construction while serving with the Contractors Association. If we could just pry it out of her, we would probably learn how Joan has helped many other nonprofits and contributed in other ways to our collective welfare. So let's see if Joan will tell us anything about what she has, what it's been like to be so deeply involved in so many community affairs while helping to run her two businesses.
I just want to say thank you very much, and no, I'm, I just, I'm so humbled and honored by all of the award recipients tonight, that this is what this community does, we give back, and I'm just one, a small member of it, and I do what I can, and I so enjoy all the work and the community that I get to serve, and I appreciate it so much. Thank you all.
Okay, this is our last gratitude recognition, and it goes to Herman Fillmore and members of the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California. They were not able to join us this evening, I think it's in part because it would be a long travel for some of the members, and some of them are older. Herman Fillmore, he's the Cultural and Language Resources Director for the tribe. He graduated from the tribe's what's called Washoe Immersion School and earned a bachelor's degree in Native American Studies at the University of New Mexico. He then returned home and determined to help his tribe preserve their native language. It has been a big transformation for the tribe over the last 15 years. Their numbers were declining, people who spoke their native dialect were declining, there were diminishing fewer and fewer people, and then a few members of the tribe made a Herculean effort to turn things around. That has included not only the creation of the immersion school, and when I say immersion, it means education in the Washoe language. And they were doing it in everything except math, because they didn't have a vocabulary for math, but they could do everything else. And then it's also reclaiming some of their land, they've been making a great effort, especially for the more sacred sites, to reclaim control over those lands, and also they've been doing general public outreach, which is what has helped bring Truckee more in contact with the tribe. And so it is my honor to recognize the tribe and express our gratitude for the work the tribe has been doing to provide us, the community of Truckee, with a deeper understanding of the Washoe culture and the relationship to the land where we now live. Their environmental sophistication honed over thousands of years. I'm saying they've been here for nearly 15,000 years. That experience fits nicely with the environmental ethos of the more recent arrivals like us and what is shared by so many of our community members. The tribe's efforts to share their knowledge is illustrated most recently by their having provided us with the beautiful Washoe name for our new downtown park, Del Bay Yumwe. The name will be a lasting reminder of the ties between our own sense of community and their own sense of land, which we now occupy. Let's hope that we can share and learn more from the Washoe people. Herman's presence and presentation at the Del Bay Yumwe ribbon cutting was delightful. He led our community with such patience, joy, and excitement, as those who attended will remember, and we learned and celebrated together. It was an unforgettable moment. We're also grateful for Herman's guidance and partnership in developing the land acknowledgement that Laurel Saylor, Laura Saylor read to us at the beginning of this meeting. That's now part of our newly adopted IDEA action plan that reflects the spirit of collaboration and dedication that the tribe and Herman have brought to help our community grow in awareness, respect, and gratitude. And beyond that, through the tribe's participation in events like Good Morning Truckee and Nevada County Sustainability Summit, they have helped all of us to learn, understand, and honor this land in a more meaningful way. So we are looking forward to continued partnership, and we're grateful for their contribution to date. And we will present this award, both one for Herman and one for the Washoe tribe, the Washihi, when we can get together with them again. And so, as we move through the month of November, I invite each of you to take a moment, to pause, to reflect, and to truly appreciate all that we have to be grateful for. And that includes one very special gift, the chance to call Truckee and the beautiful Tahoe region our home. November is full of opportunities to carry that attitude of gratitude forward. Starting tomorrow, when we come together to honor our veterans, the 1% of Americans who have stood up to defend our freedoms, protect our way of life, and serve with courage and sacrifice, I want you to know their selflessness reminds us what gratitude looks like in action. So I'm inviting you to join us at the Eagle Plaza 11 tomorrow for our annual Veterans' Day Ceremony. Tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you to those who embody the spirit of service and gratitude every day, to our veterans, to Siobhan Smart and the wagon train, to the Truckee Rotary Club for always modeling service above self, to the Chamber of Commerce, the Truckee Donner Land Trust, the Truckee Little League and Truckee AYSO, to Craig and La Fuerza Latina, to Joan Jones and the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, and to Herman Fillmore. On behalf of the Town Council and the town of Truckee, we are truly grateful for your contribution, your partnership, and the heart you bring to this community. Now, before we recess, I would like to see if there's any public comments, and then if any council members would like to speak. First of all, let's see, are there any public comments? If so, would you please approach the podium? People are, yes, Ed.
My name's Ed Vent, I'm the executive director of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Please excuse my voice, I'm kind of getting over something. I was having lunch with some friends today, and they told me Siobhan was receiving an award. I've been at home convalescing the last few weeks, and I couldn't stay away, I had to come. And, you know, I remember meeting you just outside the stairs, and you put out your hand, and you said, "I'm not sure if you're gonna like me or not." But in truth, I ended up just loving you. And going to the wagon train, when I do, it just feels like home, it feels safe. So as a veteran, thank you for everything that you do, thank you for supporting us, thank you for the Christmas tree that you put up for us and our families, I appreciate that. Secondly, I wanted to address Joan. Joan, it is totally possible for a grown man to have a female hero. Thank you for everything that you do, for Kat, for our community. At times when we're not quite sure how to proceed with something, we just say, "Let's ask Joan," right? And, you know, so, and Mitch, what, what, what can I say? Yeah, I mean, you're just a great guy, and, you know, and I see a recurring theme, you know, sitting there, see Craig here, who I just met about a month ago filming videos for the library and stuff, and what a wonderful night you all have put together tonight. I'm so glad I came up. And Jen, thank you for doing this, thank you for honoring our veterans and their service. And, you know, this is going to be a very expensive night for Kat, I can already tell, because I think just sitting there, I spent our budget for 2026 on all these groups. So thank you very much, thanks everybody for coming, and again, you know, all of you, it's very much appreciated, thanks for all the work you do, okay? Thank you.
Anything over here more to say? Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to approach the podium? Okay, I think Ed's it. Yeah, thanks, Dave. So now, we're going to take a 30-minute recess, please join us for light refreshments in the back of the room. We'd love to invite all of our gratitude honorees, along with our staff and board members, oh boy, to come forward for yet another photo?
Let's see if we can get a group photo of everybody together, the whole team, let's see.
You think we can do that? Okay. Who's willing? This is going to be a photo of the willing. That shouldn't slow anybody up, we're in recess, the photo is going to be outside of recess, outside of the meeting. That shouldn't slow anybody up, we're in recess, the photo is gonna be outside of the meeting.
We're now going to move on with another presentation. This is item 5.7. It'll be the Legislative Advocacy Presentation from Emmanuel Jones and Associates. And so we have.
Kira, if you can make sure your mic is on.
There it goes. Is that better? Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor Zabrowski, Councilmembers. It's always a treat to be back in Truckee. I'm Kira Ross with Emmanuel Jones and Associates. I've had a very productive day, meeting with staff, talking about Truckee priorities, what's happened this year, and a little bit about what we think is coming in 2026. With that, I'd like to do a little overview of the year and highlight what's on the table in 2026 at the state legislature. The governor's bill signing period completed on October 13th, and of 917 bills that passed both houses of the legislature and went to the governor, 794 were signed into law with 123 vetoed by the governor. It's about a 13.4% veto rate, it's a little bit lower than in traditional years. Typically, we see closer to about a 15% veto rate. This was a really challenging year for the state. We're dealing with a multi-year, multi-billion dollar budget deficit largely due to structural spending issues. This led to a year-long push for affordability in the state that woven into legislation and for a number of bills resulted in not moving forward because of their cost. In addition, the governor and Democratic leaders continued to push for stronger housing, environmental, and social justice policies as the Trump administration continues to move in the opposite direction. And while a lot did happen this year, some very significant legislation at that, a lot didn't happen as well. Legislation did not move forward that would have prohibited cities from appropriately and thoughtfully addressing homelessness in the communities. We significantly narrowed legislation on labor requirements for contracting out and stopped very significant legislation that would have made significant changes to PEPRA by increasing pensionable compensation, defined benefit compensation, and contributing cost-sharing and cost state and local agencies hundreds of millions of dollars annually. And while we ultimately didn't stop SB 79, we were able to get amendments to limit the bill to only counties with 15 or more train stations. So that was a big move. But there were some problematic housing bills, including one that would have, that we did stop, including one that would have required cities and towns to ministerially approve a housing development up to eight units without any regard to density, height requirements, or parking. So what did happen? AB 130 and 131, two budget trailer bills, contain some of the most significant changes to SEQA and infill housing in a number of years. These changes eliminate the project-level SEQA review but will still retain SEQA review at the housing element level. The two bills also contain a six-year moratorium on state and local changes to building standards with a few exceptions. There were about 45 housing bills signed by the governor, bills that affected ADUs and junior ADUs, incorporation of electric planning, bills to address changes to density bonus, and others. A successful bill that we were supporting to address short-term rentals that allow local agencies to enact ordinances to require the short-term rental platforms to provide information on their platform's rentals to the local agency. And SB 707 was a bill that makes extensive changes to the Brown Act and creates new exemptions from certain teleconferencing rules and extends several sunsetting Brown Act laws. In good news, the state extended the existing cap-and-trade program, we're now calling it cap-and-invest. And the final deal to extend the climate program also included some important funding from the state's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. That includes funding for affordable housing, transit, and clean air along with other priorities set by the legislature going forward. And in the final budget package that was passed, 3.3 billion out of the 10 billion of funding for Proposition 4, if you may remember this proposition from a few years ago, which passed in 2024, is now going to begin rolling out. We had very good conversations with staff about potential options in the Prop 4 funding, but that's one of the few sources of really good grant funding for parks, extreme heat, and wildfire mitigation. Finally, millions of dollars of multiple bills to protect Californians from federal actions on immigration, environmental, and other actions by the White House were passed early on in the year. Now that the legislative session is done for the year, members are now back to their district, and much of the focus for the last few weeks has been on Proposition 50. We're likely now to begin seeing some of the shifting of members, which is the outcome of Prop 50, from the state legislature into congressional seats. We'll also see a new letter, a new leader in the state senate take over next week. Senator Limone, who comes from the Santa Barbara area, has a strong background in climate and environmental justice issues. She was the senate lead on all discussions related to cap-and-trade, so that gives you a sense of one of her positions. She'll take over on the 17th of November, and will have to hit the ground running as she needs to appoint new leadership and committee chairs by early January. Finally, members will return to Sacramento for the second year of the legislative session on January 5th. Out the gate, we'll have the governor's budget, which is due the 10th. It'll probably come out on the 9th since the 10th is a Saturday, and we'll look at two-year bills that are eligible to be taken up in January. The bill introduction deadline for next year is about February 19th, and we anticipate about 2,000 bills in the second year. So we'll have all of those new bills, plus some of the existing bills that are two-year bills that have not gotten all the way to the governor's desk when we hit about the summer months typically. So major issues that are already emerging for 2026 include another tough budget year ahead. And while we, the LEO is predicting somewhere in the $20 billion range for the next two years because of the state's structural deficit, the really good news is that we've had about three months now where the tax returns that are coming in, a number of these are late from LA County and Ventura from the fires, but these are coming in billions of dollars over what was anticipated. So last month of October, the returns came in $2 billion ahead of what the state budget thought we would be getting this year. So that's really good news. That means our revenues are coming in, and we'll, we'll get a real number in terms of deficit and what that means with the governor's January 10 budget in January. We saw an end-of-session run to address property transfer taxes. It sounds like it'll be back next year, both at the statewide ballot level and with legislation. The Howard Jarvis Organization is collecting signatures for a ballot measure that would cap existing, or not cap, it would remove all existing transfer taxes and cap any ones going forward, as well as require a two-thirds vote on any new transfer taxes. Further discussions and legislation on wildfires and high-fire severity zones. We had a couple of significant pieces of legislation that ultimately didn't move forward. We think we're going to have a considerable discussion as it relates to the construction of high-fire severity zones, as well as the Zone Zero regulations that are going through, and also a lot of conversation about insurance rates and what that means. So I think we'll have a pretty robust discussion and a number of pieces of legislation next year on the issue. Multiple bond proposals. We've got housing and transportation bonds that are on the table. We have two versions of a housing bond at $10 billion, transportation bond for $10 billion. They're all competing for space on the November ballot. And speaking of the November ballot, we already have three statewide initiatives that have qualified for next year's November ballot, and roughly 30 proposals that are currently in the process right now. I'll just note two of them. The State Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, has filed for title and summary for an initiative that would substantially amend SEQA. It's called the Building an Affordable California Act, seeks to streamline SEQA for essential projects, limiting delays and lawsuits. And the Billionaire Tax Act of '26, which is sponsored by SEIU, which proposes a one-time 5% tax on California's wealthiest residents to fund Medi-Cal and other health programs. Of note, on that one, the governor's already said he's opposed to it. So while it's in the process, it's got a little issue out the gate. So it's going to be a very, very busy year. I'll stop there, and I'll just note, I'm going to send all of this to Hillary along with the links to all the bills, so we can, you'll have all that information. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Councilmember Polavy, questions?
Maybe a lot of questions, but we can take that up offline. I guess my, my main question, we've talked a little bit about it here, just with regards to some of the housing regulations and housing policies and sort of the state's obvious desire to sort of see housing at all costs. Like, what do you see as the push and pull between the housing policy and the SEQA, you know, guardians versus what it sounds like maybe some sort of proposition that will at least decrease some of the regulatory burden on SEQA? And how do you see that playing out? I mean, it seems to be sort of like really an interesting argument happening around those two proposals.
Yeah, it's sort of been relentless, I think is the sort of term of art. But no, it's, you know, there is a continued push in Sacramento to push forward housing. SEQA, this was a really big year on housing. You had the combination of 130 and 131, which really was pretty, some of the most significant changes we've seen in a very long time on SEQA, dealing with the, you know, the project-level changes. And then, you know, you had SB 79, which thankfully does not affect Truckee, but that was a giant proposal that went into, is going to go into communities, is going to put up to eight stories next to transit. That's going to be a really interesting path forward to see how it works. And I, you know, we've probably had, probably 1,000 housing bills over the last 10 years, if not more. And the legislative members continue to want more. And the challenge that we're now going to face coming into the next couple of years is that we've done all these housing bills, they're not producing the 2.5 million units that the governor wants. There are a number of reasons for that, and they did a series of hearings on this last year. But they're going to have to figure out, you can continue to do this legislation, but it's not producing. So now what? Now what's the next step? And in some communities, even if you do some affordable housing, it still is not as affordable as what they want. So you've got cost issues, you've got pricing issues, you've got market issues that are also out there in terms of the financing for these projects. So I do think we're going to see more. I do think we have to really watch, you know, measures like the chamber measure on SEQA and streamlining of projects. And then I think we've got to sort of watch with some of the, the housing bills that are going to come out this year, but I don't think it's going to stop, unfortunately.
Yeah, and I guess that was going to be my next question was, you know, we know here, housing doesn't happen overnight. It takes five years, you know, just the financing alone and stuff like that, and so is that going to be the key? Because it seems like that's kind of the main issue. It's, you have to have a willing property owner to develop some of this stuff, and so you can have all the great rules in the world, but if there's not a willing property owner to put an eight-story building on said property.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen no matter what, right? So, yeah, they, do they look at that, or are they thinking in that lens? Or they think, we pass this bill and we're going to have housing 365 days from now? Like, is that the thought process, or?
I, I think that they, so I think it's more that they, they really, really want housing, and they're willing to do, they're willing to go, you know, very far-reaching legislation to get there. There is certainly an acknowledgement that they know that in some of these bills, especially the really big ones, so the lot splits and, you know, SB 79 and some of these really pretty significant pieces, that it could take quite a while to get the housing there. But that's not going to stop them.
Right.
Right? It's, they're willing to, they're willing to try it, let's see what we can do. And, and the members are, you know, I think the numbers are that the housing is not getting cheaper. And so there's a push, like, what are we going to do? How are we going to get there? And what is the method to do it? And part of the challenge is that the reasons for it may be different in communities, but works in one part of the state, as we know, does not work in another. And so it's a really challenging issue to try to figure out what is the magic sauce.
Yeah, maybe more of a comment than a question, but it, it seems like finances is the biggest issue right now, and it's, it's not that we need more zoning regulation, it's not that we need looser environmental laws, it's that they need a big pot of money that these folks can access, you know, with a reasonable interest rate in return that they'll actually build something, because I don't know else, how else we get there.
Yeah.
It's not a question, so we could talk about this for hours. So that was why I missed my chance to meet with you next time.
Anytime.
And I appreciate you being here, year after year, so thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Roman.
I just, you mentioned, I think it was 707 related to Brown Act and teleconference. Are there any big changes, or is it more just kind of keeping what's in place now going longer term? As I spill all over myself.
Yeah, it's got a number of changes in it. Some of them are very helpful. So it's got changes that extend some of the sunsets on meeting requirements, and there's some changes in there that will allow for remote meeting requirements if you've got, for, not necessarily for councilmembers, but for, if you've got committee meetings or other things that are far away, so that, especially if you've got long travel distances. And it's got some very controversial pieces, one of which does not apply to Truckee, but requires in many situations that cities are going to have to, going forward, have two-way communications, so Zoom of every council meeting and every city meeting. So it's, it's a mixed bag. Some people are going to like a lot of what's in it, and some people are not going to like what's in it.
Got it. And are we, our population is small and therefore we don't, okay.
Yeah, they did, they split up the bill for at least the, the two-way telecommunications, so that if you're in a big county, small population, you still have to do it, but if you're in a small county, small community and a smaller population, you've got some different requirements.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Kira, for meeting with me. We had a great conversation before council. And the one question I wanted to share with the rest of you that I asked was, I was kind of concerned, we have a very robust legislative platform, and I was kind of concerned that maybe that was, because it, it became very broad this year and yet had a lot of detail in it, and I wanted to validate whether or not that was helpful or a hindrance, and Kira relayed that it was very helpful. If you want to share anything else about that with the rest of council?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just note that the legislative platform is very helpful. It's very, the way it's set up is very easy for me to work with it. And the way I use the legislative platform is that it helps me to both identify legislation that's out there, so I can sort of tag which are the ones that are going to be of most interest to the, to the community and to the town. And then, secondly, it allows that initial engagement so that we can quickly reach out and say, hey, this is going to be an issue. And then that's working with Hillary and with, with your town manager. At that point, then we can come back if there are issues that are more robust, that really need more discussion. It gives us the ability to kind of have those early conversations and then determine if something needs to go back to council for further discussion and to figure out what the next steps are. But it really is a, is a tool for me that, when it has as broadly the, the number of issue areas, it allows me to really tag the, the bills and sort of keep your staff up to speed on what is going on in the legislature.
And we think.
Yeah.
Two councilmember Polavy's point about what we need is a big pot of money for housing. The two big pots of money that we talked about earlier was cap-and-invest and Prop 4. Do either of those have any funding for housing, and if so, can you talk about that?
Yeah, and there's actually a third coming up. Prop 4 does not, so we'll just put that to the side. Cap-and-invest has what, has the same program that cap-and-trade has in it now. It's the Affordable Housing Sustainable Community Program. It's run out of, this is the, oh, it's, anyway, I'm trying to remember the entity that's run out of, but that is funding for affordable housing. So that is one of the larger pots and a very helpful pot for affordable housing. In addition to that, we've got two housing bonds that are going to be the first time we're going to have a direct funding of affordable housing. Those are both, they're twin bills, they're $10 billion for November 2026 ballot, so those are worth taking a look at because right now they have, they're largely along lines of existing funding, and they will, bonds they kind of don't do much with until they get close to the deadline. So early next year, they'll be looking at all the details of what's in the bond, but there are a number of sources of funding in there that could be very helpful for, for affordable housing going forward.
Great, thank you so much, Kira. Thank you for coming up and being here.
Yeah.
I have a question on insurance for high-fire zones, and it's in the context, I guess, of a New York Times article about.
Yep, just read it.
Okay. And that was about balancing, the insurance companies reached a compromise, they could increase the rates if they agreed to fund a certain percentage or issue a certain percentage of policies.
Yep.
In high-fire zones, and then it turned out when they drew the boundaries that included both high-fire zones and low-fire zones, which essentially meant there was an escape hatch.
Yeah.
On that, is, do you see anything in terms of the prospective legislation that's going to address that?
Yeah, I haven't seen, you know, legislation hasn't been introduced yet, but I haven't seen anything in writing, but I would anticipate that we'll see something along those lines. Legislators have been following the work of the Insurance Commissioner very closely, so I suspect that there will be some level of either legislation or interaction, they may have hearings and ask. They may have hearings and ask him to come to hearings and sort of explain what's going on.
Yeah.
But I think the other part of that is that I think there's going to be a conversation that includes both insurance, some of the zone zero interaction. And then also there was a bill last year, SB 629 by Senator DeRazo, that dealt with high fire severity zones and then also inspections of properties. I think all of these are going to kind of sort of interweave together, and in part because one of the trends that we're seeing is that some of what's coming down from the state and maybe local regulations as well as sometimes, aren't necessarily matching what the insurers are asking of their homeowners or property owners. So some of this is going to have to kind of work out. So I don't, you know, whether or not it's done administratively or through regulation or through legislation, I do think this is going to be a really big issue in 2026.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well done. Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. That was very helpful. And so our last item on presentations is the town manager's report.
Mayor, you've already announced Veterans Day tomorrow, so we are closed here at Town Hall, but we do have the ceremony at 11 o'clock down at Eagle Plaza, so please join us for that. And then my only other announcement is that there will be no meeting the Thursday of Thanksgiving since it's Thanksgiving, but we will have a meeting on November 24th, which is Monday night. So just a advance notice for the community, and that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. And now we'll go to, well, are there any, any public comment on any of the presentations that haven't already been covered with public comment? I don't see anyone approaching the podium, so we'll go ahead and leave presentations and move on to the consent calendar. There are three items on the consent calendar. First is approval of the minutes for the October 28th, 2025 special town council meeting, and then the minutes for the joint meeting with Tahoe Forest Hospital District. 6.2 is the town manager pay increase. Recommended action is that council approve Resolution 2025-64, awarding a non-base pay compensation increase to town manager Jennifer Callaway, resulting in a one-time lump sum pay amount of $8,024. And then the third and final item is the contract for development of the 2028 solid waste franchise agreement. Does anyone on council wish to pull an item? Does anyone on staff wish to pull an item?
No, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the public who wants to approach the podium to pull an item? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Do we need roll call? Because, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We can now move on to the discussion items. The first one is the special circumstances rate adjustment for commercial recycling, tagging on item 6.3, which we just approved. And it looks like Melanie is going to do the staff presentation.
Good evening, council. Melanie Grabides, program analyst with the Keep Truckee Green Division, and tonight I'm presenting on a special circumstance rate adjustment for commercial recycling. So first, just some background information on commercial recycling service. Our town municipal code and SB 1383 regulations require businesses to divert all recyclables from landfill by either subscribing to haul or provided recycling service or self-hauling recyclables to a processing facility. And as you know, we implemented commercial recycling cart service at the start of our current franchise agreement in 2018. TTSD's recycling service offered under our current agreement is limited to 64 or 96-gallon recycling carts serviced once per week. To incentivize participation in recycling service, the rates in our franchise agreement are structured to recover the cost of recycling service through trash rates. There's no direct rate charge for commercial recycling service. It's offered for free up to the same service level as a business's trash service. We have heard from some businesses that the current offering of once-per-week service isn't sufficient to divert all recyclables from trash. And we've also seen an increase in development applications for larger developments. Our development code requires that new developments build trash enclosures to store all trash and recycling containers so that they're screened and protected from wildlife. With our current service offering of once-per-recycling service, we've had some larger developments that need to store upwards of 20 to 30 recycling carts, which is both challenging to cite, to find room for, and also difficult for TTSD to service that many containers at one location. So to address the need for increased commercial recycling service, town council directed staff at the June 10th meeting to evaluate a special circumstance rate adjustment for increased commercial recycling service. Council requested that staff also consider opportunities to reduce the financial burden for businesses for this increased service. And the town requested TTSD to develop a proposal for this increased service and had the proposal reviewed by HF and H consultants. So TTSD's proposal includes adding an optional second day of recycling collection for commercial customers in multifamily residential properties. Adding the additional route require, will require shifting the recycling collection days from the current collection day of Wednesday or Thursday to Tuesday and Friday. So businesses with 64 or 96-gallon trash cart service will also have their trash day moved from Wednesday to Tuesday. And then businesses with dumpster service, their trash day will stay the same, and recycling would change to Friday with the option of adding a second day on Tuesdays. Because of these changes to the collection schedule, staff recommend implementing these changes in April 2026 to allow businesses to adapt to these service changes in the off-season rather than at the start of the next year in July, which as we know is a busy time of year. TTSD and the town will conduct outreach to inform businesses of these changes, and TTSD has a budgeted returning for a second pickup for missed containers during the first week of the change schedule. The cost for the increased service is equal to a 2.11% rate increase when applied to all commercial customers. Staff recommend recovering the proposed cost as a general rate increase to all customers, which is the same way recycling costs are currently recovered, to continue to incentivize businesses to participate in the necessary service levels to divert recyclables. If the costs for the additional recycling service were charged only to the customers who subscribe to the additional day of service, the fixed cost of running another route would be spread amongst a much smaller group of customers and result in a higher rate that would likely discourage participation. So as mentioned, council provided direction to staff to explore opportunities to reduce the financial burden to businesses, including the option of using a rate buy-down, as was used for residential rates in fiscal year 2324. Staff recommend using solid waste fund reserves to buy down the first quarter of costs for the increased service for April 1st through June 30th, 2026. To start the increased commercial recycling service sooner and at a more logistically feasible time of year for businesses, staff recommend implementing the increased service in April and using $24,193 of solid waste fund reserves to fully buy down the rate increase for the remainder of fiscal year 2526. This would allow the new service to be implemented on April 1st, 2026, with no rate impact to businesses through June 30th, 2026. If council approves this recommendation, the town manager will execute a letter agreement with TTSD to provide these funds for the buy-down. Staff have identified two cost-saving opportunities in the fiscal year 2627 solid waste budget that will offset approximately 80% of the cost increase from the increased commercial recycling service. This is anticipated to reduce the net rate impact to less than half a percent increase to commercial rates beginning in fiscal year 2627. This is in addition to an index-based rate review that will also be applied to all rates in fiscal year 2627, as outlined in our franchise agreement with TTSD. The cost offsets identified include cost savings for SB 1383 commercial compliance software. Staff have identified an alternative software used for tracking SB 1383 commercial compliance that is less costly than the current software being used, and software costs are recovered through the AB 939 fee that's included in the commercial rate calculations. The second cost offset is related to transferring costs for the cardboard drop-off program back to residential rates in fiscal year 2627. So a little bit more on that. As, as you know, as a reminder, we have two cardboard recycling drop-off locations in town. And at the June 10th council meeting, as part of approval of the solid waste rates, council approved a one-time shift of 50% of the cardboard bin drop-off costs to commercial rates. This was done with the understanding that staff would conduct outreach to businesses about this being a residential use-only program and that these costs would be shifted back to residential rates next year. Cardboard drop-off bins are intended for residential use only and had been fully funded by residential rates until fiscal year 2526. However, staff estimate that commercial users contribute about 50% of the volume of cardboard to these bins, and it's estimated that a small percentage of businesses use this service, but contribute a significant volume of cardboard. Many businesses subscribe to their own cardboard bin service as well. Shifting 50% of the cost of commercial rates increase all commercial rates by about 1%. So again, this was approved as a one-time shift of costs to allow time for staff to educate businesses that they shouldn't be using this drop-off program and provide information on the alternative cardboard recycling options, which includes subscribing to TTSD's reduced-rate cardboard service, sharing a cardboard service with a neighboring business, or self-hauling cardboard to eastern regional landfill for free. So many people might not know that, you can bring cardboard to ERL for free. We also have a physical space waiver available for businesses with no space for the appropriate recycling containers, which would allow them to place recycling, place cardboard in the trash. These are approved on a case-by-case basis if a business can prove they don't have the space available. A second day of recycling cart service might also help some businesses with small volumes of cardboard to recycle the other recycling carts. So staff will be educating businesses on these options by placing signage at the drop-off bins, sending commercial bill inserts, and through TDMA in the Truckee Chamber. So with those two cost offsets, the net rate increase for an additional day of recycling service will be brought down from 2.11% to less than half a percent rate increase to all commercial customers. So the two recommended actions tonight is to approve the special circumstance rate adjustment of 2.11% effective April 1st, 2026, which is expected to be reduced to a net rate impact of less than half a percent once cost offsets are adopted in the fiscal year 2627 budget, to add twice-a-week commercial recycling service as an option for commercial customers. And then two, to authorize the town manager to execute a letter agreement with TTSD to utilize $24,193 from the solid waste fund reserves to cover the 2526 costs of the proposed commercial rate increase, fully subsidizing increased costs through June 30th, 2026. And that's all.
Thank you, Melanie. I will start council questioning with Councilmember Romek. Councilmember Pauli.
Yes, this is my, one of my favorite topics up here, of course. Why do we carry such a high balance in the solid waste fund?
I'm going to let Hillary take that one.
I'm just wondering.
No, we, we do use that for things such as one-time large capital costs, like recent replacement of our solid waste staff vehicle that's paid for out of the solid waste fund balance. And then it also could contribute if there's unexpected costs in the event of a major disaster in the town where our revenues are significantly decreased, we have a fund balance to help sort of smooth out those challenges.
And just for context, the estimated solid waste fund balance is only about a month and a half of operating expenses.
For who?
For the solid waste funded, for collection programs and for town administrative costs.
To expand on that, most of our enterprise funds carry a contingency that would fund, and the general fund carry contingency that would fund several months of operations, so it's not out of the ordinary to have such a large fund balance. As part of the next franchise agreement, we are going to be looking at what is the correct contingency amount to have in the solid waste fund. We never had that before, but that would be baked into the rates to, to actually carry a balance. It is, it is smart operating and best operating practices to have that.
And do you, this might be a question you might not have the answer to, and I don't necessarily expect you to, but you're so talented over there. Do you have a max and min over the past couple of years of like how high and low that balance has gone? Like, has it gone up over a mil? Has it gone down to 100,000? Or is it just sort of sitting there between 700 and 800,000 and it goes in and out?
Just give me one second, I'm pulling it up.
Sure. And I'll ask just another quick question. So I guess what I'm just trying to really understand, I understand that you're trying to spread the cost. Within the commercial rate program, is my understanding, so correct this, correct me if I'm wrong, but a commercial business is subscribing to a level of service based on how much dumpster use, how much garbage, how much cardboard, and we are then paying for, through our rates, a five-yard dumpster plus a cardboard dumpster plus the recycling bins, and that's all built into our rate? And a business can say, I want more, I want, I want two dumpsters, right? So I guess if, and the same with the residential customer, you can choose one bin service or two bin service, right? So I just want, like, at the highest level, like, why are we trying to absorb programmatic costs when this could be fee-for-service, in my opinion?
Yeah, so we, we first started commercial recycling service at the start of this franchise agreement, and so I think to incentivize participation in the new service, the rates were structured that way to incentivize businesses to sign up for recycling service. It was brand new, and so it was designed that way, free. They're actually paying for it through their trash rates, but we want to incentivize compliance, and it helps our compliance rates as well. We're required to enforce businesses to subscribe to recycling service, to divert all their recyclables. So it's, it's a way to encourage businesses to do what's required. It makes it difficult to require businesses to pay for recycling service.
So basically, a business is not actually paying for more or less recycling service because it's built into the garbage rate? Is that what you're inherently saying?
Yes.
Yeah, understood. You had a really interesting comment that I'm also going to harp on, and it was on your first or second slide, where you said, a lot of what's happening, and I think it has to do with new development with regards to being able to contain our receptacles, whether they're recycling cardboard or garbage, in wildlife-resistant areas. As you and I both know, our recycling containers are not wildlife-resistant. So what did you mean by that? Did you mean like in an enclosure that like somebody, like a raccoon or a bear can't tip over versus my particular circumstance? Or other businesses that just existed previously that didn't have, you know, that weren't planning for these types of space constraints?
Yeah, so for new developments, our development code requires developments to enclose their trash containers in a wildlife-resistant enclosure. So they're usually cement walls with gates. So this is a requirement for new developments. There's a lot of businesses, like you said, that don't have this type of enclosure because they were built before these requirements went into place.
And so there's no, I guess we've already talked about that, but in the new franchise agreement, that's when there'll be the opportunity to update the recycling containers or get to that issue? Because yet more service, I actually think, will help. I think it'll help decrease the amount of unfiltered recycling, should we put it at that? Or whatever we want to call that, garbage slash recycling? That maybe won't happen, and so maybe not as much wildlife potentially?
Yeah, so currently, our recycling, the standard recycling cart is not wildlife-resistant, but TTSD does offer a wildlife-resistant cart for trash and recycling. It's the same style of cart that's used for food scraps. And, and our current rates is available, those containers are available, but they, businesses have to pay to utilize that container. So in our next franchise agreement, we could look at potentially addressing that to further incentivize businesses to utilize those if they don't have a secure storage area.
Great, thank you.
No other questions.
Just to follow up on your question about the balance, it looks like it has actually fluctuated between positive and negative over the past 10 years.
Like, it's gone negative, like you've used it. It's just not, we're not sitting on $750,000, like, 365 days of the year.
Nope.
Excellent, thank you.
Vice Mayor Klosdott.
Thank you. This is pretty amazing, all that you guys are trying to do in this one false swoop. As we have learned time and time again up here, enforcement is always the biggest challenge. So I asked this question in advance, but I'd like you to answer it for the public benefit. So these cardboard bins that are going to now go back to being paid for simply by residential fees, so therefore they should only be used by residential, residential customers, how are we going to help support the businesses in discontinuing their use of them?
Yeah, so we just started communicating this to businesses. I attended the TDMA meeting last week. We'll be sending out information and commercial bill inserts, doing outreach through the chamber. We, since the, the cost for this service is already built into the rates through June 30th, 2026, we're allowing businesses plenty of time to adjust. So that's what I communicated last week to TDMA businesses, that we are giving them plenty of leeway and time to figure out alternative options. We, yeah, I think just lots of education, and we have a pretty good compliance rate with our recycling program, so we're hoping that with clear and consistent communication, we can get our businesses set up for success with alternative cardboard options.
Thank you. And so none, clearly none of this touches on food waste, so all of that is going to be part of this consultant agreement that we just approved, looking at how to restructure our containers and create funding structure in order to be able to up that as, as the state of California continues to increase those requirements. Is that correct? I mean, we're kind of blending items here, but I'm asking because it's all part of this negotiation.
I guess, so you're asking about additional food waste requirements?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we have any upcoming additional food waste requirements that we're aware of.
Oh, I thought it continued to increase in terms of the, in terms of the types of the businesses based on their activity. But we've reached the maximum threshold of 1883?
Yes, for our commercial food waste requirements fall under AB 1826, and that is already fully in effect. And SB 1383 does not impact food waste for trucky, because we have a high elevation exemption, so it impacts all other organic waste except for food scraps.
Oh, that's right. That's what I was missing. And no expected change on that waiver from Blaster County for the residential food waste requirements?
No, so that is, that is an exemption built into the SB 1383 state regulations, and we're, we haven't heard anything about any changes coming to that.
Okay, thank you.
No questions. And so now is time for any public comment, if anyone wishes to make a public comment on the solid waste item, please come up to the podium, see no end, we'll come back to council for discussion, and we'll start again with Councilmember Romek.
Thanks, appreciate the presentation and utilizing some of the solid waste fund reserves, so that way it's less impactful to our businesses, and I'm comfortable moving forward with staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Polavy.
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna be slightly longer. One thing that I think we are missing in all of this is education for the community. So there seems to be a significant amount of misinformation about where the community can actually dump their cardboard and their garbage, and there are numerous threads on whatever platform you would like to go on. So I'm wondering if through this business education, because I, I agree, it's really easy. I do it in my own cardboard dumpsters, unfortunately, all the time. You can read labels, you know which business is dumping cardboard into your cardboard dumpsters. I know which private citizens are dumping cardboard into business dumpsters. I have the pleasure of calling them often and doing my own education, but it seems like there's a broader, if we're doing education to one segment, it would seem really low-hanging fruit to continue to do education to the broader community at the same time about the entire program. And I would like to see us doing both, because the risk that we're all about to run is we're just gonna overrun existing cardboard dumpsters continually. And that is a true, it's not just businesses that, that I'm around, I, I hear it from a lot of different businesses in town, specifically in shopping centers that have more anonymous dumping capabilities and don't have the protected, the current way to protect all of their garbage recyclables. I also am fine with this. I think you have done a very valiant effort at keeping this cost as minimal as possible and spreading it and using the solid waste fund potentially for what it's sort of meant to be there for, so I also think that's really valuable. In the future, I'm not gonna hold this up, but there is a cost to every business, and every business is always trying to keep their cost as, as absolutely manageable as possible. And this feels like a cost that is, we're trying to broaden it, and I get that, but at the same time, as a business, you have a choice of how much you're gonna recycle versus how much you're gonna toss in the garbage, and how you train your staff, and the space and the physical constraints. And so passing off high-waste businesses on smaller businesses with significantly lower margins and potentially significantly lower revenue is not a long-term solution, in my opinion. And it's something to be extremely wary of as we move this forward. This is minimal, and I get it, but if you're a small business in this community, every penny is counting right now with the cost of payroll, the cost of rent, and, and just all your overhead. And so you're like, well, I control my own garbage costs, but now I'm paying for, like, the lumberyard's garbage off-hauling, and I'm paying for grocery outlets, and I'm paying for all these businesses that are like 12 times as big as I am. So it doesn't, it just, I, I think there's a sense of equity that just should be considered as we develop this, as we develop the new waste agreement moving forward and as we move this forward. I think this is an excellent short-term solution. I think it's a real issue, as we talked about when it was before us in June, so I'm happy to see such solutions coming back so quickly. And I just hope that when we review this again in June or July or whenever it comes back to us, we're not looking at a six or seven percent commercial increase, you know, we're, we're well within sort of the, the increases that we've seen previously, which have been fair, reasonable, and in my opinion, at least within reason for escalating costs of everything. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll support what we're, is in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Romek. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Klosdott.
Thank you. Well, I just want to again say that I think this is an amazing and extraordinary restructuring with incredibly small financial impact, and I really want to commend staff for the creative thinking and approach of this, both in the buy-down and the timing of this release. You're being very responsive to the community and its needs and the busy time of year. When's the right time to do this? It doesn't align with our schedule adjustments, so we're gonna just find another way. I mean, I, I just really commend you. I think it's really extraordinary. And on that same note, this is yet another example of where the town staff are hearing and seeing an impact to our community and took action to improve the circumstances for our existing businesses and the challenges that they're facing on this issue, but also our future businesses and developments and how the single pickup a week was gonna significantly impact their ability to do an effective development. So really commend town for that, and town staff for that, and great job. I'm fully supportive of this, and I look forward to continuing to participate in the discussions that you outlined in our previously approved item. It's an extraordinary schedule and a lot of public input, and I'm looking forward to that process, so thank you.
I agree with the vice mayor on everything, except I'm not sure I look forward to it. But everything else, I'm certainly in agreement on, and I can't wait to see what happens, I guess. On the items that Councilmember Polavy brought up, I'm persuaded by the position in the staff report about this approach being done in order to encourage compliance and to reduce the cost and effort for enforcement, the difficulty of enforcement. So that said, I think we certainly need to tee up the idea of fee-for-service as an alternative approach, really. That needs to be developed through an evidence-based approach, fact-based approach, to see if that really is a reasonable alternative. For now, I'm, I'm fully supportive of staff's view of it. So for tonight, anyway, I think we're in unanimity, so let's see, let's test it with a motion.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve a special circumstance commercial solid waste rate adjustment of 2.11% effective April 1st, 2026, which is expected to be reduced to a net rate impact of less than five, or 0.5%, once cost offsets are adopted, and add a twice-a-week commercial recycling service as an option for commercial customers, and also authorize the town manager to execute a letter of agreement with Tahoe Truckee Sierra Disposal to utilize $24,193 from our solid waste funds reserves to cover the 2526 costs for the proposed commercial rate increase.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to item 7.2, and so this will be Yumi Dawn, is the Affordable Housing in-Lu Fee and Workforce Housing Ordinance Review.
Good evening. We're here to talk about, as we do every year, the Affordable Housing in-Lu Fee and Workforce Housing Ordinance. Just to give you a quick refresher, we require affordable housing for all residential projects. Fifteen percent of all residential projects are required to be affordable. We also require it for non-residential projects that generate more than seven employees. Fee payment in lieu of construction of affordable housing requirements can be done at the developer's discretion for smaller projects, so smaller than seven units or less than 10,000 square feet of commercial or less than 20,000 square feet of industrial. For larger projects that go beyond that threshold, it's at the town's discretion whether or not all affordable housing requirements can be met through an in-lu fee. But in all cases, if there's a fraction that's required, a fraction of an affordable housing unit, in-lu fees can be paid at the developer's discretion. It's either that, or the developer can choose to build the next one unit up. In 2017, we adopted an in-lu fee based off of Bay Area economics study for figuring out the nexus between affordable housing and the, the gap between affordable housing and a market rate unit. That was then reduced by the council to a different number based off of what the subsidy is to fund affordable housing projects. So that was used as the baseline. We also adopted a streamlined update fee so that every year we can look at market trends and adjust the in-lu fee based off of what's happening in our community. We use the home values, using the single-family home values in the Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors Information, construction cost index from the Engineering News Record, and then we also use the Nevada County Income Limits, which are released every year. Those three numbers are used to come up with our own trucky index on how do we, how we increase our affordable housing in-lu fee. So looking back, and you can see all the numbers from back until 2005, but this past year, we had an increase in the single-family median home price for trucky at around 11%. The construction cost index was around 10% increase, and then the Nevada County Income Limits also increased around 11%. So with all of those numbers combined, because of the adjustment of the Nevada County Income Limit change, which also matched the increases of the median home price and the construction cost index, there was really no net change based off of our in-lu fee calculation that we adopted in 2017. It's about a 0.4% decrease, actually, and from 136,851, which was adopted last year, and the calculation came out to $136,333. Based off of past direction from council, where we've seen some decreases based off of this calculation process, the council has usually directed the staff to forego adopting a new fee that reduces the in-lu fee number, because market trends don't really reflect that same reduction that we're seeing in the calculation. So tonight, based off of past direction from council, staff is recommending that no action be taken, that the previous resolution that was adopted in 2024 be maintained, and that language is reflected within the resolution that says, if no resolution is, no new resolution is adopted, the one that's in effect will continue until a new one is adopted. And just to give you a quick recap on what's happened this past year, in the last year, we collected approximately $12,000 for Kid Zone Museum, that was our workforce housing requirement. And then we have a few projects that are approved and pending but have not yet paid because they have not yet submitted or got, or received their building permits for issuance. So we have the Zurich Place Offices in Taladona, Ski Slope Townhomes in Taladona, Georgia Ranch Parcel II, the Waldorf School, Trailset Townhomes, Silver Creek Estates, Benner Multi-Family Residential, and then the Lampertie Mixed Use Project over in Trails End. So those are still pending in-lu fee requirements that are out there. And then, as always, we do a quick look into how our workforce housing ordinance is doing, and that's also an affordable housing requirement. It requires non-residential projects to provide a portion of the housing needs for the new employees the project generates. And that calculation is based off of the type of use, so typically commercial or industrial, and then the square footage of that use. Small projects that generate less than seven employees, based off of the calculation, are exempt from the requirement, and then projects, small projects less than 10,000 square feet for commercial and double that for industrial typically are qualified for an in-lu fee. And the ordinance requires us to check in annually to see how it's going, and of course, you can choose to amend the, initiate an amendment to the workforce housing ordinance at any time. We've collected that Kid Zone Museum workforce housing in-lu fee amount, as well as Taladona Association downhill ski lodge. Deed restricted one existing market rate unit for workforce housing as an alternative equivalent to the standard workforce housing requirements. And then there are a few workforce housing ordinance project, or requirements that we've already gone through as in-lu fees that were required as part of our project. I do note that the Georgia Ranch Parcel II, in addition to that little bit of in-lu fee, they also are required to do eight workforce housing units. Based on past direction on the workforce housing ordinance review and looking at a renewal of a policy update of the affordable housing in-lu fee, past council direction has been that we wait, we initiate it as part of the housing element update, which we're in the throes of now, and then that will likely come with it an action for us to look into it more deeply, see what kind of policies we want to change, which ones we don't, and then go through a public process on how that, what that looks like. So tonight, staff is recommending that you accept the update on the affordable housing in-lu fee and workforce housing ordinance and not take any action. No, no resolution is before you today. If you would like to adopt a new fee, we can return at a future meeting with a new resolution based off of your direction tonight. And as I noted, we'll look at the in-lu fee and workforce housing ordinance as part of the housing element, and if you accept staff's recommendation tonight, we would continue the in-lu fee that's already adopted, which is $136,851. the in-lu fee that's already adopted, which is $136,851. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Yumi. We'll start with councilmember Polovy. Councilmember Romack.
I don't think I saw any, did we receive any public comments from any organizations on this or anything?
I did not see any.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm I didn't miss anything. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Klosdod.
No questions.
Yumi, I just want to make sure I understand on the question about how many inclusionary units we've created as a direct result of the inclusionary housing requirement. You pointed out that totally we have 397 deed restricted units, but 138 of them ended up being workforce or the alternative, an alternative agreement, which is allowed under the statute. Does that, do I then just subtract to find out how many are income restricted?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, 159 units then. Okay. More generally, have you thought, given all your experience, how either one or both of these ordinances, inclusionary and workforce housing, could be modified to increase workforce housing? Because we have the conundrum, right, the contradiction of we make housing more costly in order to provide affordable housing?
Yes, it's on my mind a lot, on how we can improve the inclusionary housing requirements and the workforce housing requirements. With inclusionary housing requirements, there are some state laws that we are required to abide by to figure out what the nexus requirements are. Both types, we would have to figure out the nexus. There are limitations. The state has been pretty clear that 15% for inclusionary is the number that we, that jurisdictions should use. If we want to exceed the 15% threshold, then I think there's quite a bit of work and research that we would have to do to justify that amount beyond the 15%. So I think we are going through other processes. You will see the homegrown housing updates in the near future, and I think we're trying to tackle it in other ways, not necessarily just with inclusionary housing. The workforce housing, yes, I've looked at that a lot. I think it's a pretty, I mean, from my perspective, I believe it's a pretty low threshold in terms of actually meeting the requirements of the workforce. It's only 14% at the highest proportion that you're providing workforce housing for your employees. So I think that there's opportunity that we can look at in there, see what other jurisdictions are doing. There are other opportunities for commercial linkage fees if we think that there's, we'd like to use funding instead of requiring construction to be, units to be built. So there's things we can look at. We haven't dove deep into that policy discussion, but I expect we will soon.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. We'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Polovy. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. David? No. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, now we'll go to council discussion.
Nothing further. If anybody else has anything they'd like to say, go for it. Otherwise, I don't even think we need a motion.
I do, yeah, we don't need a motion. But I do want to thank staff for their due diligence on this every year. I mean, we see this every year, and it is interesting to see kind of where it lands, going, you know, sometimes going up and down and not really aligning with what we all know to be valid in the real world. So I appreciate seeing this every year and validating that we still have an appropriate fee. And yeah, I think that's everything that we need to say about it, and let's just keep it going.
I feel the same way. The percentages bounce around, both the construction costs year to year, and then our other index bounce around, big shifts back and forth, and the council is tending to stay steady in terms of what we're charging. Right now, I think that's the best path. I haven't, I'm just, this confirms, affirms it for me again. So I don't have any brilliant ideas, or ideas at all, I guess. Okay. Is that enough direction?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, then we can move on to item 7.3, and that is our amending Title 15 in the municipal code. That brings up our chief building officer, Mike Ross.
Good evening, all the mayor, members of the town council. I can only say that I'm fortunate that I get to meet with you every three years and not every year for my discussion item. This should hopefully be a fairly simple process. I think we're all familiar with the modifications of codes that get changed every three years with the Building Standard Commission. We're going to go ahead and highlight that we are looking at the 2025 California Building Code of Regulations. I want to bullet point, there is an additional codebook here that you'll see in the staff report, which entails the urban Wi-Fi interface. It's important to stress that there's really nothing in this text that we're not already doing. I know that could be of concern. This text came out after the Palisades fire, and it was really to try to outline a little bit more of the concerns in those regions for this council and for the community. Reading through this, this is not anything we haven't already been doing in the past. If there's questions, I can answer those at the end of this.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, Mike? For some reason, that mic is not transmitting well, and I don't know if the, if the audience, the TV audience, is able to understand you. Can someone check in the audio?
Can you hear me now?
No.
How about now? Can you hear me now? I don't need the mic. How about now? All right, very good. Is there anything that you wanted me to reiterate on what I just said there? Thank you. All right, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and give a gentle reminder on the process on how this works. So every three years, the Building Standard Commission will obtain international version of codes. The Building Standard Commission will comb through those codes and tailor them specifically for the state of California. It's at that point that the local jurisdictions are notified, the codes are published, and capable of going through an adoption process. As indicated in the past, any time a local jurisdiction is looking to make an amendment to the code, it has to be based on topographic, geographic, or climatic conditions to justify it. Secondly, it needs to go through a public hearing process as we're doing now, and then an actual adoption that carries it forward. It's important to also identify the idea that when the state indicates that we are going to be going through that adoption process, the codes are implemented January of the following year, in this case, January 1 of 2026. What this means is that any modifications that need to be made need to be put into play. I'm going to call it need to season, so that on that said date, they are effective. As we heard earlier, there was one other twist that came towards the building, SB 130, I believe it was. SB 130 put a lock on any modifications to the code. This does not mean that anything that we had in place is not currently being used. It just means that I can't, from a building official standpoint, add anything additional to what we have. All said and done, the idea is ensuring the fact that we go through this public hearing process to ensure the fact what we have in place maintains in place at least for the next six years. That being said, staff's recommendation is for council to accept the introduction process and come back on November 24th on a consent item to adopt the codes. That being said, does council have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll start with councilmember Romack.
I just, similar question on the last one. We didn't receive any comments from any organizations on this one either, public comment wise.
We did not.
Okay, just confirming. No further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Polovy. Vice Mayor Klosdod.
It does appear on the staff report, though, that you did have a meeting with CAT and TTEA in November on this item to review the recommendations?
There has been conversation with CAT on this. The intent here, based on the information I've come, is to have a workshop. I'm just not quite sure when that workshop is going to take place. The review of the said changes that I'm seeing that would say significant are more how the book has been restructured, so where they're at in the codebook. My job is to comb through what's in there that has actual effects for the community that's more important for them to know. Historically speaking, since 2000, modifications have always stemmed from decarbonization. Fluorescent lighting, a good example. How do we consume, how do we save the consumption of our natural resources, our resources, and use what we naturally have out there? That's what's a little bit more important, I think, for what our community does. So not sure if I'll have something before the end of the year or the turn of the year, but there will be a workshop that will outline that.
Excellent. Thank you for investing time and energy in that. It's really important to our building community. And so California Fire Code won't be part of this consent item. That'll be coming back as an action item?
That's a really good question. I believe that will be a separate staff report and an independent adoption, introduction and adoption process for that.
It'll be the same process. We're just not quite ready. The engineering staff are working through some things with Chief Kessman. And the, this is a little bit unusual process, so in case anyone's wondering about it, ordinarily, we would have a public hearing with the first reading of an ordinance, but there's a quirk in state law that for this particular thing, we do the first reading first, and then we set the public hearing. And so it's not quite a consent item. It's a public hearing, and then you would adopt it if you're so inclined.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, and I look forward to that.
Just as a follow-up, we hope to have the fire ordinance in front of you at the next meeting.
Okay. On the 24th.
On the 24th.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
And then, so the workshop would be followed by a public hearing, where if there were issues to be presented, the council could entertain them?
That's a really good question. I don't know how to answer that.
Just say yes.
Yes, but to reiterate, as Mike said, a new state law came in that says that we can't make any new changes. We can only continue in effect the same old local amendments that we've had on the books prior to a couple months ago. So because none of the changes are new, I don't anticipate that we would get a lot of comments or interest from the building community, because it's all the same stuff we've been dealing with for years.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. So any public comment? Stay awake, Jason. Okay, come back for council discussion.
I think I'm happy to make a motion that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 2025-09, and set a public hearing for November 24th to consider the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And that takes, thank you very much, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, council. Have a wonderful night.
Yeah. Okay, that takes us, I believe, that takes us to council reports. Do you want to start? Councilmember Polovy.
I was out of town, so I don't think I have anything to report.
Councilmember Romack.
Yeah, along with the mayor and several staff members, I attended the joint Nevada County, Nevada City, Grass Valley, and Town of Truckee meeting that we held last, was that last week? Two weeks ago? Lost track of time. October 30th, yes, two weeks ago. It was at the Miners Foundry, which I had never been to, cool, old building, but a great opportunity to hear from a variety of folks. It was all housing-focused, so there was two presentations from HCD. One gentleman via Zoom discussed the, how they figured out the numbers, and I feel like it was still a little bit confusing, and ways in which it seems, you know, the way our economy works with the tourism economy and second homeowners, and how our housing stock is utilized, you know, they're making us find higher numbers. So I think it was interesting and appreciated them being there, but still clear as mud, I would say. And then there was a few panels. We had Yumi participated in one panel, along with some planners from the other jurisdictions, and afterwards, did hear again how everybody's just impressed with Truckee and what we're doing. So Yumi, you did a great job of highlighting, you know, our ADU program and some of the other things that we've been able to accomplish. And then Lynn also had a panel with Isaac from Placemate and Heidi from the JPA, talking about, again, some of our creative solutions that we're finding in Truckee along lease-to-locals, homegrown housing, THAP. So that was really great to be able to share some of those stories. And just, yeah, a great time to have lunch with folks from across the county, and have a glass of wine later as well. I think that was the majority of what I was up to. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Klosdod.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Following up on councilmember Romack, both Yumi Dawn and Lynn Bumgartner, they were on separate panels. Lynn led one of the panels, and I guess essentially, Yumi was the lead on the other one as well. So the Town of Truckee shone brightly in front of the other jurisdictions. That's not to say the other jurisdictions didn't have their own innovations that were worth hearing. There were, there were things to learn from the other jurisdictions. But yeah, it was a great time. The Foundry's fantastic. I attended the TNT TMA meeting, that's the Transportation Management Association. When Alfred Knox finally agreed to vote for himself, he was unanimously elected secretary of the association. And the other, one other thing I'd highlight, there was the bicyclist who was killed on the Prosser Creek Bridge over Highway 89 North, which in part prompted a, the preparation and submission of a letter to Caltrans, asking them to review that portion of Highway 89 to make it safer, to try and prevent that kind of thing from happening again. And then we had reports from the winter public transportation in Placer County and Truckee, and essentially, it's going to be slightly expanded services over what occurred last winter, with some notable successes prompting the expansion. So I think that's it. It's just a little after 8:00, and we can adjourn. So.